In the meeting, if you would, please bow your head for the invocation and then we will do the pledge of allegiance. Eternal heavenly Father, we thank you for your blessings that you've given us today and every day. We thank you for allowing us to meet here, to serve as elected officials, to serve our town. I pray you give us the wisdom and knowledge to make the correct decisions according to your will. Please guide and direct us in all that we do, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. On your April 28th agenda, you see two business items. Under number four, item A, consideration revision to interim town manager contract.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we defer that one to after the closed session.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item B, review and discussion of the May 5 preliminary agenda. And flipping over there to six, consent agenda, council, you can see what's already on there. And we'll move to new business, item 7A, approval of award of bid arrators at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. So, council recall back with the budgeting process we did for this current budget we're in. We did CIP item for the arrators, replaced three arrators. Excuse me, sorry. So this is, we finally got through the design phase of what we need. So this money is already in the budget. We're hoping to have the bids in hand to discuss tonight, but it was a formal bid process and we didn't have enough bidder, when one bidder show up, so we had to rebid, re-advertise. That is going to be tomorrow, so by the time the meeting comes next Monday, we'll have numbers in hand for you. But this, there will be no budget amendment or anything required for this because it's already in the clue of the budget.
Okay. So we probably need to leave that on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, that way we can review the bids.
Item A will remain. Okay, item B, Valdez Bluff sewer line bid results and discussion.
So this one is on here as a discussion or information. No action is needed tonight, but it doesn't deserve a discussion, so. I'm trying to get everybody up to speed on this. This is a subdivision that's been in the works for a couple of years now. Probably four years ago, it was during COVID, the state awarded some ARPA funding that was appropriated for this project in the amount of $801,983. At the time, we had a rough idea of what the cost would be, but as we know, prices have gone up since then. So when we finally went out to bid last month, the bids came in about double that. So we've got McGill here to talk about a little more if we need to get some more information on the actual project. Fast forward to, you know, after we got the funding, when we started discussions on the design of the project, we met with the developer, we had the county involved with this because they do have an interest in this project as well because it will develop some tax base revenue. There's about 140 to 150 single-family lots that these, this subdivision would eventually develop if it were to take off, looking at about $300,000 to $350,000 homes in there. So the county has a little bit of interest in this, but they also have some other projects that they're looking at funding as well. The developer, we've asked the developer to come up with a security, you know, because the difference between the ARPA funding that we have and the project cost is about $770,000. So the original idea was to split that with the county half and half. The county doesn't see a real return on investment for that investment on their end. So that's something that council needs to be aware of, that we may not have the county help us with this on this project. We're still in the works, trying to work with the developer to try to get him to bring in a national builder, maybe. This particular developer is more accustomed to horizontal development where he puts an infrastructure in and then he sells individual lots for people to bring their own builder into the subdivision and build, which we know, we have some projects here locally that that takes a long time to develop. So to get our return on investment on this, it would be great if he can build, you know, 20 homes a year in here. The security that he gave us was 20 homes over four years, and if that doesn't happen, then the town and the county would retain those 20 lots, so we basically split them in half. That really doesn't give us much for our investment of almost $400,000, so. The reason why we're talking about this on this agenda is because at the June agenda, if it's on that agenda, the bids expire June 5th for this project. So we'd either just let those bids expire and not go forward with this, and then at a later time, we'd have to rebid it out, or we, we have to plan on the county not being a player in this. We'll keep working with them and see if they can come up with something, even if it's not 50% of the cost. But just trying to get council's direction of how we want to handle this going forward because the bids will expire June 5th, which is three days after our June council meeting. So just wanted to have this on there as a discussion, no, no action needed on this month's meeting, but trying to talk about this a little bit throughout the month and see what we need to do. And on the, sorry, on the memo, I put in the best example, even if the developer puts up 20 homes at 300 apiece, that's about $6 million valuation. It's only about $25,000 a year in tax revenue, and we're putting in almost $400,000 in the project. So, you know, our return on investment will be a number of years before that ever happens. So we'd like to see a little more action happening before we invest all that money, possibly.
I agree. You only leave that on the budget for May to discuss?
I do have the bids here, the expenditures. The actual bids for the project came at 1.3 million, and we got some engineering design work that totaled at 1.57 million. The actual project, I guess I should have started with this, but the location of it, it's about an 80 acre tract next to Drawn, right there. So it'd be coming up Love Lady and then split off, and this about, about right here is where that entrance would be for that subdivision proposed. So the first phase one would be about 27 lots, I believe. But there's, he has plans for 140 or 150 in there. We do have McGill here tonight if there's any specific questions on the project or anything like that as well.
So basically, you're saying that if the county or the developer will not help us, that it's $770,000?
Correct, correct. I've asked the developer if he would be willing to put some money into the project itself, the actual project, and didn't really get a good clear response from him on that. I did ask him if the, the security letter that he sent us, that that was his best offer, and he said, yes, that was his best offer.
So he basically expects us to take care of all of it?
Right, right. So.
I would just note that this is a reminder of the settings where the town spent about $2 million putting a substation out there for the settings. This one is worse in one regard. With the settings, the town had a performance bond guarantee that when that developer went belly up and that subdivision didn't happen, the performance town had to, had to go through some machinations to get some legal action, but the town collected on the performance bond and got streets put in and sewer lines put in. The settings still doesn't have very many residences out there paying property taxes. In this case, we could put this thing in, shell out $700,000, which is about one-third of our 2023 tax revenue, and that thing may never happen. There's no, there's no guarantee that he even has to wait after if he walked away from it, ever have to do anything. He could be left with nothing but a sewer line to nowhere. I hate to bring up another analogy, but that's where we would be. It's awful.
And this would be paid from the utility fund, but like you said, if he puts in 20 homes and walks away from it, we put in 770,000 for 20 homes. And we, we have a lot of other sewer projects, existing sewer projects that need attention before we invest in new stuff.
What's your pledge, counsel? What do you want to do with that?
So we can, well, we'll, we can keep it on the agenda for Monday and then talk about it more and decide if we want to think about it over the week, if you want to do that.
Okay. Item B will stay on the agenda for May 5. Item C, approval of resolution, sale of town on property through 41 Roderick Street North.
So for this one, this is a property that was approved for upset bid process at last month's meeting. We went through that process, there were no upset bids. So the, I think the bid amount was $7,500 on this property, if I can get to it here.
Yep, 76, 75, $7,500.
So the resolution is to actually sell it at this point, so it's the decision that will be made at the next Monday's meeting.
I think we could put that on the consent agenda.
I concur.
I agree.
Okay, item D, approval of amendment to the Valdez Town Council rules and procedures. Counsel? I know our attorneys put in quite a bit of work on this, and I've, I'm sure all of you have reviewed it, and it, it looks good to me. I think it will cut down on some challenges we have.
The only question I had was the amount of minutes that people were allowed to speak. It went from five to three, and I still feel like most of the people that speak to us use their five minutes, and I, I'm not so sure that I would be in favor of dropping that to three minutes.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say about it, it does create expediency, but there's a balance there. One thing council can do, and they can always do, whether it's three, five, or whatever number, is if someone runs out of time and you feel like they need additional time, you can vote as a council to extend their time for additional minutes. So bear that in mind, but I, I'm perfectly happy to set it back to five. I know a lot of municipalities that use three, I know a lot of municipalities that create a total amount of time that can be used. You just have to gauge that and make that decision.
I just feel like if people want to speak to us and use their five minutes, we need to listen to them and allow them to use their five minutes.
I have a couple other questions about that. I don't, I have strong feelings about it, but not as about the public comments. It's, in a way, it's a little bit odd, and it puts, I think, our citizens at an imbalance by having the comments before the meeting because there were several examples in the last year where somebody got up and, and made a, you know, a passion discussion about something which was on the agenda and was passed anyway. So, anyway, I was wondering if, oh, and then the other things I've noticed is that some, some people will come in sometimes, make a, make public comments and then leave, you know, they want to stick around to see what the council's going to deal with. So a couple of questions I had is, could the public comments be at the preliminary agenda meeting instead of at the regular meeting, which would give the council a week to think about and react to the comments on the upcoming agenda? Or could they be at the end of the council meeting, which again would give the council an opportunity to, would give the citizens would know what took place at that meeting, where they're going to comment, and then the council will have a whole month to consider and deal with those comments?
Yeah, so I, I think the statute on that just requires that council provide one session for public comment at a regular meeting per month.
Is it a regular meeting?
Yes, but, but technically, your pre-agenda meeting is a regular meeting because it falls on your calendar. So I, I think you could do either of those. It would require some additional, I think, modification to your rules of procedure. I think your rules of procedure specify the order in which things happen, and now put that at the beginning. But I will say, if we're going to get into additional amendments, then this might be an item that you want to pull, and we can revisit at another meeting.
Like I said, I don't feel that strongly about it. I'd like to hear what other people think about it, or if they even thought about it before. And the other thing is, I guess, we have a new manager coming on board one of these days, and this kind of thing, I think, might be good to have his input on this one, so. I'm just winging it up.
Maybe it would be worth pulling it back, table, pulling it off this agenda and giving time for Mr. Herms to review for a month or so, and then bring it back forward with any other changes.
Discuss it more.
Right.
Okay, I agree with that.
Item D will be called from the agenda, item D. Okay, item E, approval sanitation vendor for fiscal year 2526.
Okay. So this is on here as a result of our budget discussion a couple of weeks ago. In the budget itself, if you recall, we have a proposal to go with Simply Green. Here it is. Simply Green Recycling, Republic Services is falling short of citizens' expectations, council's expectations. So if we were to go with Simply Green, there's some, some things that need to happen. We're already working on a contract with them, but the biggest kicker is the sanitation carts. We have to get those on order, so we want this to happen as close as July as we can. We do need council's direction, this is the way we want to go, even before the budget is adopted, so that we can get those carts on order. We don't want to have to pay for them until July, but it takes eight to 12 weeks to get them made and then delivered to us and stuff, so. Just to remind you a little bit of what we talked about, so we looked at for alternative solutions. Republic's been with us since 2017. We identified Simply Green. Isaac, the owner, came and spoke at the budget retreat. What, what doing this allows is no increase to customer or citizen recycling sanitation fees for this year. Switching to Simply Green saves around between $26,000 and $28,000 in the budget, and it would require purchasing new carts. So at the, at the budget workshop, we, we showed a picture of a sample cart, and there was some discussion on the color of it. So I had the manufacturer go back and give us a more of a neutral color, it was a dark green, kind of blends in with the environment. So here's a dark green with a black lid, and then a dark green with a blue lid for recycling, and we could put a recycling symbol on top of that so people know. But, so that's kind of what the discussion was about tonight.
If we don't get the new carts in on time, what happens?
Yeah, that's my question.
Uh, well, that creates a problem. Kind of at the mercy of Republic at that point, so.
Pray for cold weather.
The more, the more we can, we don't have to rely on, on them continuing to serve us, the better. So we can.
You have ordered the carts yet, right? You need a motion from, you need action from the council?
Yeah, I guess not so much a motion, but just okay, I guess, is this the route we want to go in the budget? If the money's in there, is this the route we want to go, so then I can go ahead and get that rolling, so.
Where we can cut these lists?
I was going to say, you only need these carts if you switch to the new vendor, right?
Right.
Yeah, and so we, just, just so council knows, we don't have, we have drafted a contract, we have sent it to them. My last recollection at least is that they're still working on their revisions, so we don't know what their revisions will be at this point. I just mentioned that, I don't know if ordering or approving an order for carts is premature.
He, he indicated to me that they have some, a few revisions, but nothing to do with the pricing or the terms or anything like that. So, yeah, so there's nothing major that's going to.
When do you anticipate hearing from him again?
Well, his, his attorney was going to get ahold of Mr. Swanson at some point, so, yeah.
Let's give it a week.
Yeah, and we don't have to order these right away, you know, we figure eight weeks. Even if we get the order in by mid-June, maybe. So even if we decided at the, at the June meeting, I would say, be a good time to decide on that. But we just put, we had to put it on here for the agenda to talk about, so I just wanted to, and I also wanted to show you the rendering of this, you know, think about if this is the carts that everybody likes, that we would end up going with. They have all kinds of colors, but trying to keep it as neutral as possible.
Okay. Item M will stay on the agenda. Item A, fiscal year 2425, year-to-date financial results.
Okay. Bring that up here. So this was a long one here. We're at 75% of the, of the budget year. So a quick glance at some things for the general fund, our total expenditure so far is 72%, so we're lining up with that 75% of the year. Total revenues are 86%, so we're coming in a little higher than we projected at this point. Ad valorem taxes, there's still $41,000 remaining to collect. So now, remember, this is through March, so I've already seen April's numbers, and we've collected a lot of that already, so that we're looking good on our ad valorem taxes. Sales tax revenue is on track, there's no growth there, but at least we're staying flat, we're not decreasing. A big thing that you'll notice is our interest earned on idle funds is up 239% from where we had put in the budget. Two factors come into there, we're conservative when we budget for that because we don't know what interest rates we're going to do. Fortunately, they've stayed above 4%, so that's helped a lot. Second, we haven't spent a lot of money, so there's a lot of idle funds sitting out there that's earning interest. So that's, that's helped with that a lot. And then also a big savings item was the manager position, about $84,000 in savings between FICA insurance, retirement, all that stuff, so. All that's in the general fund. And then if we look at utility fund, total expenditure is 67%, so we're lower there. We do have the arrator project coming up, so that will be a chunk of that because remember, that's in the CIP. So expenditures is CIP and operating, right? Revenues are 71%, so we're trending a little low, but I don't think there's anything to be concerned about at this point. Let's see. Water and Sewer Department, we had some vacancies there, so there are a little bit of savings in that, in that budget line. And then one thing I wanted to bring to attention is utility bill, utility bill penalties, $27,000 additional revenue. So that is the fee, the non-payment fee for folks not paying their water bill on time. So I know we got, you guys hear a lot of complaints about rates going up and stuff, but customers can save themselves a lot of money if they would just pay their bill on time, and I think that's more of a public service announcement for everyone, that we're getting a lot of revenues just from people not paying their bill on time. So that's something, just to, just wanted to bring your attention that, you know, that helps our, that's bringing our revenue up a little bit more than we had planned.
Are you saying that we kick those rates way up that we'll get even more from more late payments?
If they don't pay their bill, yeah, they'll, they'll save quite a bit if they just paid on time. You know, we got the auto draft that's free that anybody can sign up for, so. With this reporting is the investment account balances. I won't go over that tonight, but those shows the two investment accounts that we use. And then also, I include a trial balance report for the capital project fund accounts so that you can see the fund balances that are included with those. And when, when I, when I put those together, because you don't have all that documentation yet, but you'll see when the project fund is up, there will be a cash account, and whether it has a credit or debit in the column, that'll tell us whether it's a positive or negative fund balance. If it's a negative fund balance, that means it's like a reimbursement project, and we haven't gotten those reimbursement funds in yet, so we're, we're floating those funds until we get those in. But that will show you all the project accounts themselves, too.
And that'll have all the restricted accounts and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, it'll have, it'll have all the project funds, yeah, yeah. So there is some restricted funds that are built into the total fund balance that are not a project fund. So those are like donations, escrow monies, things like that. Those don't actually have a fund, they're actually just built into the audit itself, so you'll see those.
Will they be broken out somewhere that we can see them? I know, again, I mentioned, I mentioned at our budget workshop that the, the audit report refers to the major ones, but there are a bunch of minor ones, too, I think.
Yeah, and, and those, those minor ones, they're not project funds, they're more restricted funds, they're within the total fund balance. They're listed in the audit as, as separate, and that's something that, you know, we can get the auditors to come, go over one day. I know they're busy this time of year, but I can kind of go over that with you, too, to just highlight some of those. But I, I know what you're asking about, those restricted funds that are in there. The, but project funds are, they are restricted, but they're a different type of restriction, yeah.
Yeah, I get the difference, I just, you know, I'm looking for the total picture.
Yeah, yeah, they kind of got to piece it together like a puzzle, but yeah, the project funds are a big piece of that puzzle, though, yeah.
Okay. Item A will stay on the agenda. Item G, consideration of fiscal year 2526 budget workshop follow-up resolution.
I was asked to have that one, the resolution on there because I was thinking about the, where we want to end up with the bottom line on this budget. It was, it was looking good, it was in the black at the end of our budget workshop. I think it's even better as a result of a few things that have happened since then. On the other hand, we are going to be compensating a manager out of this, well, out of this current year budget, but out of the new budget as well, and I don't know if we anticipated that for a full year. So I think, I don't have any more to say about this, but I'd like to see this on the June 5 agenda and then hear what the, our finance officer and our new manager have to say about the budget, which is probably not much until we have our May 12 follow-up meeting, and that's.
You said, you said the June 5, you mean the May 5?
No, I mean, I meant May 12. What did I say? I meant May 5, yeah. I'd like to keep it on the May 5 agenda. Maybe talk about it a little more on May 5, I'm sorry if I said June 5. But the discussion really needs to take, needs to take place at the May 12 final budget review meeting, and I don't know if we have an opportunity to make motions there if we, well, we could, I suppose, we could set the agenda to do that.
Well, yeah, it'll be a, I assume it's a special meeting. Is that how it's noticed? Is it a workshop? You don't notice it as a special meeting? Oh, well, then you can't take action.
Well, for right now, let's just leave it on here for the May 5 meeting agenda, and we can all think about it for another week.
Okay, yeah, that'll stay on the May 5 agenda, please, ma'am.
Okay, let, let me ask, we did save $84,000 from the town manager's position, which will be put toward, it's in this budget that we can use. which will be put toward, it's in this budget that we can use on the new town manager's position, correct?
Cur- yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll dip into that eighty-four, eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, for the last couple of weeks of the, we're, we're so close to the end of the year.
Yeah, that's why it changes a little bit for the last month's.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and just backing up to item E for the sanitation vendors, that sounds like we're gonna have a May twelfth meeting, so do we just want to discuss that at the May twelfth meeting, since it's budget-related? Is that, instead of happening on the upcoming?
Is, does council want to have a May twelfth meeting?
Want to have a what? May twelfth meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, I think we absolutely should, that's a budget review, and that'll be a few days after we have a new manager start. And I think, yeah, I think we definitely should have a budget review meeting on May twelfth, absolutely, I do, I mean, I'm, I'm one, but I'll be here if we have one.
Okay.
Okay.
But just, just knowing that if it's not a special meeting, that there can be no discussion or vote on that item.
It'll be a workshop.
No vote, no action.
Well, you really shouldn't have discussion on it either.
Can't discuss the budget?
You should notice it as a public meeting if you're gonna have discussion among council.
Yeah.
Do you have a majority of council?
It is a public meeting.
Okay, yeah.
But it'll be a workshop.
It'll be the same as what we just did.
My, my feelings are that I don't like taking action on items in a workshop, because I feel like it's, it, it's not transparent, that, that's just me.
No, I agree with that, I think that's fine, um, I thought the question was, are we gonna do, do the meeting on May twelfth?
Yeah, that, that was, yeah, that's where I was, but we are.
Good time on May twelfth, maybe the evening or?
We'll get, it'll be in the morning, nine o'clock.
That's what's on our calendar.
Same as we did a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
And we'll kind of go over the same information with some updated numbers we've got, and, and we'll have the, uh, water and sewer rate information, too, to go over. We'll, we'll hit general fund and utility fund all in one day, instead of, like, before, we broke it up into two separate days. Since we're just fine-tuning things, well, it'll just be all together, yeah.
Okay.
And so I guess going back to my question on item E, do we want to save that for May twelfth as well?
Okay.
But what, yeah, but what, item D E, didn't we kind of, I thought we had that kind of resolved, all we needed was a direction from us, is that right? Isn't it while we're working on contracts?
Um, I don't know, I know we need a contract, I don't know what else we need.
I just, well, basically, I just need to know what color we want to go with, and, no, I'm really, that's.
Green.
But I know that can be pretty important to some people, so.
I think it's gonna be green, simple green, a lot of help pay for them.
Yeah. Just think about it, we can talk about it on May twelfth, because I don't, I don't need to order them this soon, so.
So do you want item A to be on the May fifth agenda?
That would be my recommendation, there's no sense in talking about it.
To leave it?
Or, I mean, May twelfth, yeah.
May twelfth, we'll remove item A.
There's no sense in talking about it on May fifth.
And move it to May the twelfth.
Yes, sir.
That way we can get the new manager in the discussion, too.
Good idea. Okay. Item H, consideration of policy guidelines for citizen and public access to community center facilities. Mr. Harvey?
Yes, I did suggest that one, uh, there are, uh, a couple of things that are odd that, that the town does do or doesn't do. Uh, we have at two ends of the town, community centers. Uh, the one on the west end is our cultural center with, uh, a, an art museum and cultural activities and a tourism office, and the one on the east side of town is our Jimmy Se- Jimmy something drawing, uh, recreation center. Uh, I think those two ought to be open on the same days, and I think that should be a town policy. How they're staffed is certainly the manager's responsibility, but I just think they ought to be open on the same days, that's one thing. Second thing is, I think our tourism office ought to be open on Saturdays, and anytime there are special events in the Old Rock School. We run on, at those special events, we run literally thousands of people past the tourism office, but it's closed. I think it ought to be open, uh, and then, I mean, any, on the art gallery that's in the Old Rock School, uh, I mentioned the last time we talked about this, I forget which, pardon me, that was at the budget workshop, I guess, so I'll say it again. Bell D's might be the only, might have the only art gallery in the United States, if not the world, that's closed on Saturdays, when tourists can come to town. So, I just think, you know, the, the town needs to, you need to get our act together a little bit. We spend a lot of money on signage, and we spend hundred thousand dollars just on tourism brochures and attractions alone. Uh, let's have the art gallery and the tourism office open on Saturdays, it's just, that, that's simple. Plus, again, as I said, tourism office, I think ought to be open during special events, when we run thousands of people past, past it.
Item H will remain on the agenda. Item I, Bo.
All right, public safety buildings update, so we've got interviews with, uh, three firms on, um, May twenty-second, um, starting at nine in the morning, and that'll go to one P M. So, that's really the only update I've got for that right now. You want to move on to the next one? Per, okay. Water plant upgrades, since, uh, RJ spoke at the last meeting, they're, they're still in that process, so there's really no update on that project. And then the recreation center ADA in pool, um, so looking at that project, the ADA work, we'll look at two separate projects, so first of all, the ADA work, that is, uh, actually gonna be getting started later this week. Uh, Halk is planning on being on site Thursday or Friday, to start taking the awning down. They're gonna focus on the demo work first, so they'll, they'll do that part, and then they'll go over to the, uh, tennis area, take some fencing down over there, and then their concrete contractor, as his, his availability comes, he'll come in and do some of that, uh, work for that, so. That's gonna get kicked off here very shortly, and then as far as the dome structure itself, um, the contracts are completed, the down payment is completed for that. So drawings have been started, and, um, long lead items such as like the fabric, then, and, uh, inflation fans, heat exchanger generators, they've all been pre-ordered, so that's in process. Um, Yedon has assigned a project manager for the project, and he will be our project lead and our contact for that. So, he will be in contact with, uh, David Anderson, and also Austin from Moss Marlowe, who's doing the site work. Uh, we're going to have, um, project meetings every other Friday, uh, until the project's completed, and so that's kind of where we are on that right now. So things are rolling on that project good.
Okay, item I will remain on the.
Could you give us a little update on the funding situation? Uh, what's the progress that the staff's making on launching the, uh, capital fund drive? Uh, any word on the, uh, uh, five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that has been, that was applied for, for the, uh, pool cover, which I know you've been trying to get an amendment to?
Sure, uh, so the capital campaign fund drive, I guess we need council's direction on how that wants to look. Um, the rec commission was the ones that came up with that idea, um, to, for the permanent structure, so if we're gonna do it for the dome, we gotta figure out if we're gonna hire a, an outside firm to handle that. Since it, and that may be a good idea, since it is a county-wide used structure, uh, rather than trying to get just Bell D's local-only donations, maybe have somebody can outreach to the whole county, and try to find out, you know, a campaign drive that way. And then as far as the funding for the, the grant, um, I did have a conversation with them on Friday. Um, it's just a paperwork process at this point, but they did verbally confirm with me that they would be awarding, uh, the grant for the dome structure. They gotta do an amendment to the scope of the project, so basically taking the permanent structure part out, and putting the air-inflated dome structure in there, so they get verbal confirmation, um, from them on Friday on that, so that's, that is good news for that end.
That's a little bit more than good. Uh, that would add about five-hundred-thousand dollars to our, uh, fiscal, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five bottom line of fund, uh, fund contribution, wouldn't it?
Yeah, so remember, uh, last month's meeting, I think it was last month, we did a budget amendment to pull money out of the fund balance, so basically, if, once we do get that confirmation, that, or I got the confirmation, but the, the documents, probably at next month's meeting, I'll have a amendment to kind of reverse some of that, so we'll recognize the five-hundred thousand coming in, and then we won't be pulling so much from fund balance. So that'll definitely help with our fund balance growing into the next budget year.
And there's also one-hundred-thousand-dollar matching grant that's kind of in limbo, is that right?
There is a private donation to match those, that money that we, we've obtained, um, whether that's still gonna be used for the project or not is still to be determined. But right now, it's part in that project fund, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll, for those of you that haven't seen it, we have hired a town manager, uh, Mr. Todd Herms. He has, uh, been a longtime manager at Maiden, and he will be here for the May fifth council meeting. Okay, council, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight point eleven A six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee. Motion, please.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of signify saying yes?
Yes.
Okay, and when we return, there may or may not be action taken based on what takes place in the closed meeting.